So now you can just do it when they get.
Order. Call it being ordered, um, he'll stand for the first grant. They're all taking this day and thank for this wonderful range sent to us and uh, thank for letting me be here to conduct county business and. Please help us have a good rest of the week and good safe rest of the week. Last is all in your name, amen.
Thank you. United States of America, we're the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual, we're the liberty and justice of the world.
Who would call approval changes being changes?
Yes. Oops, um, one, uh, item D, I wasn't sure if the city was going to approve the mural agreement or not, and you guys already voted to approve it, so we can go ahead and remove that. Um, from the agenda as it can continue to move forward. And then the other one is that, uh, we took a consensus a few weeks ago on the gift cards for the. Um, employees, uh, I'm asking that we can go ahead and put it on the agenda for once the, um, the. Invoices received, then we can just pay it instead of bringing it before the board. It's just kind of a pay as, as soon as we get that, so. Um, that would be my only two changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, what county manager.
That's and. I've got a motion by Commissioner Charles, second by Commissioner Halsner. Well, any comments, questions? All day, ready, right hand, say aye, or aye, opposed, or none. Alright. Republican announcements, presentation of awards. Just looking at House Stephen, I'd like to remind everybody that the, the board that adopted rules procedure, government council, commissioner meetings, the board of those rules, they have a free minute. Limit for each speaker, um, so we'd like that in mind, we can maybe move on along after. If y'all have any questions about that, feel free. We have a public announcement, presentation of awards.
Uh, just a quick one, uh, y'all have met Bron, my new deputy manager, a little bit. I just want to say, there he is, hi, there it goes, um, uh, he will help me with all the things and I, I feel that, uh, where the areas that I need to work on and I'm not strong in. He is strong in, so we'll make a good team, so I, I hope that, uh, we can further, um. Further our, our agenda. And then I also wanted y'all to meet Ms. Carolyn Smith, she is with the ARPC, she is the economic development person that I was telling you all about, so I just wanted to point out that she was here today, I'm not gonna ask her to say anything because it's off the cuff, but. Uh, I'd at least wanted y'all to know that she's here and if you have time after the meeting, that she will most likely be around for some questions. If you have any, so there, those are my announcements.
Alright, well, those citizens request input on non-adjutant items. Station A and address the record, please.
Paul Henry, that's classified, I could tell you, but then I'd have to do something, I didn't want to, I'm getting contacted here, I'm retired law enforcement, so I don't want to manage ourselves. Commissioner Dyson is about to give you a resolution that I drafted on governor, most excellent governor has come up with this idea. About doing my property taxes here for longer overdue. Uh, I've lived for almost twenty years, I had enough money that I spent in this world, it was done presented by bought my house retail back in two thousand and six. Wonder if we've made sense then, as well as all of the Yalmin's sales effects. Candidly, it puts hardship on us, most of us know the last four years have been kind of tough financially. In addition to that, I retired from highway patrol in two thousand and six. Uh, we faced a great recession, more bad federal fiscal policy, I won't worry with that, so. What this does is this encapsulates our governor's idea of going away with all property taxes, not just the non-schools alone. It doesn't make anybody jump through your goose, it doesn't say you have to own your house for twenty years, it doesn't say you have to be sixty-five or older. It treats everybody fairly, which is what the fourteenth amendment told us, that's why we live here in America, so we can treat it fairly in my estimation. So I'd like you for you to look that over, there's a time listed on there for the start of the legislative assembly. I realize I might not be able to make that, but, uh. And I know you can't speak right to it because of the limitations here, but I would be glad to come back and speak with you at length about this, because it's something I'm excited about, as is our governor. And our politicians in Tallahassee are kind of all the best known here, because these bills they put forward don't fix the problem. They didn't, um, I bet. But you get three minutes, they have a mission here.
Alright. Any other citizens request input on non-adjutant items? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on, consent agenda. Motion to approve. Got a. Motion to approve by Commissioner Charles and a second by Commissioner Graham, all the paper, great comments, audience. All the paper raise right hand, yeah, alright, all voters, see you then, passionately. Alright, all the general votes. Twenty-five, twenty-six holiday calendar.
Yes, this is just the, uh, holiday calendar and then the meeting calendar for the next year, I do have a couple of edits, because I should have run it by the clerk's office first, um, the two, um, edits would be, uh, in May. Um, I have, for whatever reason, an extra week there, so we'll just meet on the seventh and the twenty-first, not, um. Not those, like, not the fourteenth or the twenty-fifth, because the twenty-fifth is a holiday, oh, that, no, that, that was right, so, but that's where that is, so we're gonna change the fourteenth to the twenty-first. And then in October, the clerk's office had asked, because it's the end of the fiscal year, if we could, um, in order to pay the checks on time and, and be able to accurately close out the. The books for the fiscal year prior, that we move those to the second and fourth Thursdays, that way, um, that'll approve all of those September, um, invoices and make sure they're put in the correct year before we close out those books.
Check number.
I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Graham, second by Commissioner Pearl. Any comments, knowledge, hold on, all the paper raise right hand, say aye, I voted, see you then, passionately. Alright, wealth consortium potential projects.
So, uh, Commissioner, um, Paul had asked that I bring some ideas forward, um, these ideas only came from what other communities have done with the Gulf, uh, consortium, uh, funds. Um, Bay County was able to construct, construct an emergency management center, which I know that's something that we, uh, have put in our legislative ask, so. If that doesn't come through, this could potentially be something we might be able to use, um, our funds for, uh, they've lost, Santa Rosa County also did the same thing, um. There was also, those same counties were able to use it for economic development, I'm not saying we use it for economic development, these are just some ideas. Uh, as our industrial park is built out, they were able to, um. Buy some property and build a new industrial park, if that's the will of the board, whatever, it's just some ideas, um, there was also. Uh, training that, uh, Bay County used towards, um, workforce development and creating a business incubator, which that is something that the county did. When I actually interned here, Dallas Garrett, I think, was the gentleman that kind of helped with some of that, I can't say it was completely, um, successful, but it was, you know, something that we could potentially look at again, if you all are interested. I'm not asking for you to necessarily make a decision this evening or this morning, but, you know, there are just some ideas that we put out there, um, I, uh, didn't, uh, hear back from Dan Doherty, uh. Commissioner Grambling and I had spoke about potentially using the funds to, um. Survey our roads, um, that way we can have a good idea of how right, wide our right of way truly is and, and that kind of thing, which in, in turn can help out with some resiliency and floodplain management type stuff. But I, I didn't, haven't heard back, back from him yet, so I don't have an answer on that one, so, some, if you guys have any questions or further ideas, um, I know Evan, he knows all the, the legal ins and outs of a lot of these, um, projects to, you know. You know, at least the, the gist of things, so he can help with, if you guys have any ideas as well, but, um, I know we need to continue to move forward, so that way we can get the funds spent.
That's true.
Yeah.
I had a comment about, uh, matter manager, about how much funds we don't.
So the, um, the pot, and I get the two pots mixed up, um, I think it's pot three has the twelve million and pot one has around three million, um. The, what we had currently, um, put for our pot three, as long as I don't have the pot, pot mixed up, is, uh, we were trying to run the sewer to Lloyd, which I believe the board has kind of decided that that wasn't necessarily a. A good project, because that would require the city of Monticello to go all the way to Lloyd, which is seven miles, and it's actually a lot uphill, and it just wasn't cost effective, so, um. But, uh, so that would be a project that we would look to, to re redo, and then the other one was for the Wasissa River Park, making further improvements, which. Um, that one has actually been closed out, because we felt the, the river was, was adequate as it was, um, or at least that's what the board previous had decided, so.
Have you, have you any, from, um, um, I'm probably sure about the Hopkins Land, maybe use some of that funds to make a park or, you know, a form of boat landing or something up there, Hopkins Land up in there, Fort Capitol. Has been ideas about that?
I would, um, at least from what I've heard, is that, uh, the plantation owners, uh, were really concerned about opening that up to, uh, and making it a bigger location, and I. I don't remember how big the property is, I feel like it's only five to ten acres, so if you were gonna put in a true boat ramp, which I know it's really steep, we would have to redo that boat ramp, so that way it, it's easier for the, the boats to get in and out, because having it steep, if it's loaded. With water or something, it's not very, very good, but, um, but I, I, I would. If we, that's truly a way that you, you all want to go as a, a group, I, I would try to reach out to those, that plantation that live, that's around there, because I, I think we might need to try to acquire a little more property potentially, or. At least get their support, because I don't want to make an enemy.
The chairman said part three, part one fund. For what we, uh, manage management operations, can you. You, about how much of that we are talking about now, would we get a maximum fund from the list, like, I mean, I noticed one of them, we looked at something about.
In theory, I, uh, I was talking to somebody yesterday that actually is building the emergency management center in Swanee, and that one is like, I think he said it was a six thousand square foot facility. And it was four thousand, or four million dollars, uh, so, and that actually included clearing, so if that was something that you all wanted to do. We, I don't think we would need to worry about a, a match, that we would have enough to cover that project.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, my thoughts are still around the workforce training, you know, it doesn't matter how much industrial park you buy or business you bring, I know we've been years past, we've missed out on a few things, because, you know, the. They, they just said, hey, there's not the workforce here to support that, we're, we're, if we don't, you know, start there, um. With the vocational training or whatever, you know, we're not, it's gonna be hard to attract anybody that's gonna need a, an educated force of some sort to, you know, to employ, so I would love to see us start there, I think we're really behind when it comes to that, you know. Anyway, that's just where my thoughts at, I like where we're going with all of it, but I would like to see us focusing on that, and that, and I feel like that would be something that, um, they may send that money down quicker than some of those other paths, so I guess that's my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Good. Any other comments, more toys, we need to learn anything, we can do anything, just think about it, and that is.
Yep, uh, because we won't be able to change our, is it SCP, is that what it's?
Yeah, probably is the SCP, uh, it's, it's a lady process to, uh. Um, to get funds for, for that and make changes to your, uh, to your SCP projects, something quick about, um, about this, actually, the consortium's going through the process of doing the amendment now, yes, it's the amendment now for next year. So if the board's looking to change its projects, which it sounds like it would need to do, that'll take his interest in doing the current projects that are in the SCP. On that, it'll be the look at doing that in twenty twenty-seven, so that amendment process will begin in the fall of twenty-six, so that would be a good target date for the board to, you know, if we're gonna, we're brainstorming projects, coming up with projects to spend these funds. Um, that would be a good target date to hit, try to project lineup by about fall of next year.
Yeah, let's not sleep, let's keep pushing this forward, um, you know, whether it takes putting something on every agenda to make sure, you know, like together and get this button up now.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm ready.
I had a minute, um, what is the deadline, do you use this year twelve million or three million?
I don't think there's, yeah.
For pot three, the deadline is, the final deadline is twenty thirty-two. Um, but, you know, it, this money, the twelve million is allocated for Jefferson County, but there's the possibility that. The longer the county sits on this fund, on, on these funds, there are other counties, there are twenty-two other counties that are part of the Gulf Consortium. And if we start getting closer to that twenty thirty-two deadline, and the county hasn't spent those funds, the funds are allocated for Jefferson County, but technically they're just the Gulf Consortium's funds, so you, I could envision a scenario where other counties start asking like, hey, these funds, we don't want them, just go to waste, you go back to the federal government, um. Other counties may ask to, you know, start, uh, tapping into those funds, the one that it gun waits.
Appreciate it, Catholic.
Alright. Ladies and gentlemen, priorities for lovers.
Yes, um, so I just need to make sure that I convey to our lobbyists that, um, and I'll have that for you guys at the next agenda, who, who is picked, um, but, uh, what kind of, um. Or not picked, but recommendation, sorry, but what, what are your priorities, are we trying to get grants from our lobbyists, are we trying to just basically have them as a bill tracker, you know, like, what is, what is kind of our one and two that we want to make sure that they're strong in?
I'd say both of those, they might be granted, but with the bills, that's amazing, we talked about, I found all the bills, make sure we never come along there.
Alright, and then the bills, are they, are we focusing on land use bills, or what, or is there a certain focus, because there's so many, you know, but, um, I didn't know if you had.
Yeah, yeah, the, the land use bills for sure, as we saw what happened last year, was, was pretty devastating to what we can do as a board, um, that should be up there. Is this an opportunity where we could use them to try and get some funds for broadband?
Probably.
Seventeen million, it sounds like you get the whole county, that's a ton of money. I think that, I think we all agree it's one of the biggest priorities for people in this county, this. That's what I'd like to say.
Okay.
More about that, um, about that purpose, uh, we were talking about.
Uh, yeah.
Because you know, just kind of our mindset, we don't have, we don't have any memory something at all, and, um. You know, we got real good outdoor, man, stop drive, you know, the parks outdoor and all parks, whole park in the month. That stuff, and but we don't have indoor city.
Right.
All the lighting capital in the world and all this stuff, that, you know, kids can't play outside there, it snowed last year, you know, well, the beginning of this year, whatever, whatever, so, or so. And it might snow again, and, and we get improvement well here, so, uh, I'm starting, uh, the staff of Senator Corey Simon, they were saying. As a legislative priority, if we could show like for the, uh, the old gym. Uh, or either whatever other location the board wants to be at. For a multi-purpose building, something like, kids could come in at school, use some computers inside the building. Uh, you know, uh, century twenty-one type thing, and the, uh. Basketball, jumpboard, whatever, all the inside, indoor, but also. Uh, his staff saying if we can mix that, lean that in with a new emergency management shelter, emergency management shelter, that's a possibility, that it could become a legislative problem.
And I got one more comment, Miss May, what about, um, you know, and I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but it don't sound like the, I'm trying to keep up with all the emails and everything at the Senate, at the senior center down there, it's not, don't sound like that mess is getting any better.
I think there's a disconnect, um, with the senior center staff and the, uh, elder affairs, I can't put my finger on it, but I haven't tried. Super hard, because it still is the senior center, it's not something that's technically ours, but, um. I'm, I can't say a hundred percent where that is.
Now that you guys look up in your office, there may be somebody to look into that, you know, it's important to our community, that, and I seen this center's done so wonderful for so years, and it's really disappointing to see it run into the mess down there, we, we've. You know, the, the senior affairs, they, you know, dressed the board, told us point blank what's going on, I know we do give citizens funds, a certain portion of down there, but, um, just look into it and see what, if there's anything that those. Let's face it, nobody's do down there to fix that, write that shit, it'd be awesome.
Sure, and just so y'all know, we didn't, we haven't given any funds to the senior center or elder affairs at the moment, because I don't know what's going on, so I don't want to give them any money, so. Yeah, yeah, so, wait, I just want to make sure you knew it's not expensed yet.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's very important, to make it their act together, that's.
We could possibly have the, um, have the lobbyist track all the legislative things going on with the property taxes, because that's gonna have a lot of news in the end, so. But, um, maybe Commissioner Charles, there also might be an opportunity for something for that workforce training.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good for the Gulf Consortium too, but I'm saying that might be.
Absolutely.
We might be able to get something, because they're definitely, I, my understanding, trying to prove that, you know, both, at least on a vocational side. With students, it might, might just be a possibility. If y'all are interested.
Yeah, that's all good.
I think that is good, I appreciate it, yes, sir.
Alright, giving over the rural grid.
Yep, and, um, so I guess at this, uh, time, if you don't mind voting on the, the Visa gift cards, once we receive that, I don't know if we. Because it was add-on at the end, I don't know if it's a formal vote at the moment, right? It would be a formal.
Alright, we got a motion from Commissioner Hall and second from Commissioner M. Comments. All the paper raise right hand, I, I voted. That's, you know. All you need to add.
Yes, sure.
Alright. Plan department update, will it?
Don't need anything from me, uh, been in there, sort of been abbreviated before.
That was nice, I appreciate it.
I think I responded to your email, I was putting very well put together, but maybe can you elaborate, just for the public, they were adding that maybe just, you know, touch on some of the bigger stuff.
Yeah, so, so, uh, next Tuesday night will be our planning commission meeting, that will, uh, we'll hear a couple of items there, the, 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 the one that's drawn to most attention is the, the change in the comprehensive planning of each plan, which may have been about Lloyd exit. Uh, requested by, uh, Mr. Coonjar there, uh, my review is, is in the agenda package that's available online, we directed. Uh, the calls that we've received at the office to the agenda there, let them get the information, um. Bottom line is the, uh, the pre-application meetings and things we had this summer, um, with, with engineers on behalf of the applicant and loves trucks, uh. Uh, indicated to us that, uh, a change in the, in the future language map would be sought to accommodate a truck, uh. The agenda, excuse me, the application package that was submitted makes a mention of that, uh, however. In talking with DOT and talking with, uh, their traffic engineers and things, that that is still behind the scenes, and I've included some, some things there in the, in, in my review and, and in the agenda that, that indicate that. That is the intent of this, uh. Change that's being requested there. Maybe they changed their mind, but the, the application page doesn't make any mention of that, it's just a, it, it's a, it's a vague request for a large change in our, essentially in our zoning, so, uh, it's something that we want to.
And that's a range law that you're talking about?
Yes, sir, it's something that we want to really approach with caution, we don't want to create any. Long-term major liabilities for, for this board, for the citizens in terms of where their tax money goes, uh. Let's see, there's another, another item on that agenda, uh, there's a request for a, a small variance from a setback up there to one of the hanger lots. In the, uh, Jefferson, uh. Jefferson Landing subdivision, um, and then we'll begin to hear the last item there on next Wednesday, and we'll begin to talk about, uh, those LDC revisions, um, that we advertised, and. Um, we're, we're gonna take that in sections, it's just, there's a lot of information, they won't actually get it right, so we're gonna hear items, uh, sections one through nine next Tuesday, that'll get us through the, uh. The, the portion of the LDC that we need to update to address, um. To address, uh. The, the residential care facilities, halfway houses, treatment facilities and things that we're seeing possible, we don't have good code on. Bring us into compliance statute on that, and it'll get us, uh, into the section of the code. That addresses, uh, public advertising requirements, it'll condense that, make it a lot simpler when, when, when someone comes in the door with an application. We can take the application and say, this, this, and this, this is the timeframe for it, this is what needs to be done, um. And, uh, I think those are pretty cutting, they're high, so it'll be easy for us to, to talk about and get it back to you, uh, the, what will remain of the LDC. Uh, to discuss at planning commission will be the sections that deal with subdividing land, and that's gonna be a little more complicated for us, that we, that we create something that, that. It, uh. Gives us controls over what's going on, but doesn't create burdens for, uh, families that have land as assets, farm families, timber families, and things like that, so that's gonna be a balance, if we're gonna want us to remove that, but. Oh, that's about it, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Lady commission, will it? Captain, oh, this, yes, sir, Captain's not appropriate problem for me to talk about, anything he just talked about, coming up on body commission.
If you have general questions, um, for David, that's fine, I would just take caution, David at the board, to sort of stay away from the merits of any of the stuff he mentioned, but informational questions, that sort of stuff, that was fine.
Hold on, wait. Okay. Wait, one more thing, I think I even replied a year ago, but, but where's, what's the location of the tire sales thing, it says South Jefferson, but it doesn't matter, is that something the board can know, or?
Yeah, it's gonna be just, it would be just south, so you have the old piece of that building, and then there's the building that was, uh, I think was a realtor's office that's been remodeled recently, it's gonna be right beside that. Back off the road, maybe another fifty feet.
Okay, I just didn't, you said South Jefferson, and I, I never saw the address.
Yeah, there is a tiny, there is a tiny piece of developable land there on that six, five acre parcel. Um, there's a wetland in there, and, and we've got an eighty-foot wide wetland setback required in Jefferson County, which is great, it keeps a lot of things out of places they don't need to be, but if, if. The implementation of an eighty-foot wide setback from the wetlands. Creates less than one-half acre of developable land, then that eighty-foot automatically shrinks to a twenty-five, twenty-five foot setback, so. That's what created that small little piece of developable land there, but they came to us with an application for a, an auto sales, uh, building, um, and. Through our research, we found out that that was indeed not the intended use, it was, it was for tire sales, uh, which could have required more parking, that they could not accommodate. Um, planning commission turned it down in June or July, um, they reworked their plan, came to us with something much smaller, um. That it's better in terms of, of the setback, and I think it's a better, it's a better fit for, for the site, far, so it, it, it worked out. To, to, you know, to, to the, um, to the benefit of, of the area here, I think.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, um, update the board, um, the audit is, um, going along, um, smooth, working with the auditor, um. We, we, we're very close, twenty twenty-four, and then, um, once that is completed, we're gonna roll, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to get us. Back on track by the June thirtieth, um, deadline of next year, so that is our plan, and we appreciate my finance team for, um, working, so with the auditor, giving them everything they need, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright.
Board, hope y'all have a happy Thanksgiving, well, just a couple updates, we've been in contact with Surveyor Frasco Highway, they're supposed to be delivering us first, I think, third of the road. Um, sometime in January, so after the new year, we'll be hitting ground running, um, just want to let you know, I will be at the next meeting, uh, I'll be out of town, but. If I don't see you, talk to you before then, Merry Christmas, um, Jack should be here, but, y'all, y'all have everything for me.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank y'all.
Alright. Just a quick reminder for the board, um, if you have not turned in your county manager evaluations yet, uh, please do so prior to or be next board meeting, that will be on, that will be on the agenda, uh, next meeting either way, for your review and valuation of the county manager, so this is your last opportunity to get those evaluations in. That's all I got.
I just have one item, uh, we had discussed, um, you know, for public transportation purposes, potentially bidding out that project, um, I, uh, after going to a couple of. The disadvantaged board meetings and things, I, I really kind of recommend that we stick with Jefferson Express, um, they've already established themselves in the community and, uh, are. I really think that they do their best to keep the cost down and everything else, so I, I, uh, would ask, is that something you still want to bid out, or we, or can we work on going ahead and getting a, a contract? ask, is that something you still want to bid out, or we, or can we work on going ahead and getting a, a contract with the Jefferson, Jefferson Express?
Maybe going ahead, and, uh, after my involvement on that board and, and moving forward, it's a need that, they've been here, they've filled that need for a long time, and, um, but I, I would like to see if there's any grants out there, if you could ask for, you know, to, I know we had, we were operating on grant for a long time, but maybe throw that one in there too, you know.
Sure. Is that kind of a consensus, everybody okay with that?
Very well.
No, well, yeah, we'll bring it back later, for, yeah.
Liam?
No, sir, yes, sir.
Alright, Commissioner Hall?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to, I do want to compliment the, uh, recreation department, the open department, and, uh, whoever here, solidly, whoever else, but now, keeping the top of the up down that, uh, Goose Pass went down and presented the other day, the water, of course, was beautiful, as, uh, still by Wasissa River, right? Water beautiful, our folks out there having fun, as you mentioned, now, standing in the bathroom, staying in order, they make credit, and, and four to five, that was, this is a park.
Yeah.
But, um, that, I just want to compliment staff on that, that part was really good, keeping it connected, it was good, it was good.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I just wanted to see if you all wanted, and I'm sure we've all done something individually for, for coffee freezer, but if we wanted to maybe spend your money.
Makes great idea.
On behalf of the board.
Alright, that's.
I don't know, we need to vote on something, on a price point, or anything.
We can't manage this, especially that you've been something.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's off the menu, babe.
That's great, great idea, good idea. You should offer. Uh, nothing for the wish chain.
Nothing, right? Motion, motion.